Good to see each one of you. Glad you could make our meeting today. It's July, turning the curve next month will be a big month. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kobo.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
If y'all would like to just stand and join us for the pledge by Mr. Beatty and our invocation by Mr. Manley. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, just how awesome and loving and merciful God you are, Heavenly Father, the Creator and sustainer of all things, dear Lord. We just praise and glorify you and thank you so much for the blessings you give us each and every day. And thank the opportunity we have to come together as a school board today, Heavenly Father, and we just pray that you will give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need to make decisions that's in the best interest of our school system. And we'll just keep you the praise and glory for that. We thank you for the safety that you provide to our system each and every day and just continue to bless and guide us in the things that we do. Heavenly Father, just to be with this meeting today and let the decisions be made be pleasing to you and glorify you, Heavenly Father. Most of all, we thank you for your plan of salvation with Jesus' care and that plan to cross and what a great Savior. Halt, we pray in Jesus' precious holy name. Amen. Board, I need a motion to approve the minutes from June 9th.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. We need a motion for the approval of today's agenda.
I'd so move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none, motion to carry. Mr. Geis, have a personnel report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kobo. Just one introduction today. I know Mr. Thompson and Ms. Calhoun are happy that that, we're at that place where we're down to one. They're hopefully winding up a busy summer, not as busy as been in the past. I know they're happy that, but we have one new assistant principal introduction at Richwood High School, and that's Ms. Erica Faust. Erica's sitting right over here, so. Congratulations, Erica, and that's it.
Mr. Manley, do we have any cards today?
Mr. Kobo, we do not have any cards today.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along to item number one, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution recognizing the final form and execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection with issuance and sale of general obligation school bonds. Series 2025, East Washita Parish School District of the Parish of Washita, State of Louisiana, providing for other matters of connection therewith. Mr. Grant Schluter.
Grant Schluter with Foddy Udel Bond Counsel, Beck Haynes with Argent, the financial advisor for the board. We had a very successful bond sale on the east side, 25 million being the initial issuance. The TIC, true interest cost, was 4.53. We will be delivering this bond issue July 22nd. Proceeds will be available from the $25 million sale on that date. Because a premium was bid on the bond issue, you will net more than 25 million for construction. The amount deposited in the construction fund will be 26,254,000 and change. So, very, very good sale and a lot of, and the underwriter, Stifel, did an excellent job in marketing the bonds. They worked very closely with Argent, your financial advisor, in the, in the processing of the sale. It was very, very successful. One of the reasons that you enjoy a low interest rate in any given market is your excellent bond rating from Standard and Poor's. Most school boards in Louisiana are in the A category. You're in the double A category with the double A minus. I would encourage everyone to read the latest report from Standard and Poor's. They focus heavily on the good financial management of this school board. And I'll just read you a couple of quotes from the, from the report. "The school board's financial stability is a credit strength supported by management's ability to produce nearly break-even results year over year and keeping reserves at its formal policy level of 10% to 15% of expenditures." They talk about stable financial performance and an able management team, and it goes on and on. I usually don't see this in the Standard and Poor's reports. Very good. It's one of the primary factors why you have that high bond rating. Higher the bond rating, lower the interest cost, lower, lowest possible cost to the taxpayers. So, congratulations. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Need a motions to take action with respect to adopting these resolutions?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, motion to carry.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Grant, thank you, Beck.
Mr. President, may I say something?
Sure.
I just want to thank the superintendent and Mrs. Manley, Ms. Regina, Micas, and the rest of their staff for doing an excellent job. And one of the reasons we were able to get those type of comments from Standard and Poor's is because of the work that they do here, so I think you ought to give credit where credit is due.
Thank you, thank you. I think it definitely goes both ways, having a superintendent and board that support us in everything that we, that we do goes a long way.
All right, moving on to item number two, policies for consideration and approval. DHEDD, school bus scheduling and routing, Mr. Nichols.
Good afternoon, Board. The Policy Review Committee met Wednesday, July the 2nd, to discuss the policy that you are giving today for consideration for review at the last board meeting that's going to be voted on today. This policy should be in your folder. The committee reviewed this policy and agreed to leave the policy changes the way forethought presented, with the exception of adding on page three that any exceptions will be determined by the Director of Transportation, and we also changed the wording of supervisor to director. So, at this time, we are asking the board to approve policy EDD, school bus scheduling and routing.
Any questions?
Just like to add that, to that, Mr. Kobo. Mr. McCormick is not here, he's on vacation. He presented this to the policy committee. This did not originate, this is one of those different policies that we don't see that often. This did not originate from legislative action. This originated from our drivers and our transportation department with this request. And it's all, at least the first two changes that Ms. Nichols mentioned is all about the safety of our kids, about having students walk to a safe pickup zone where possible. And Jennifer mentioned, we added the language in there, the transportation director would have to approve. We don't want kids, you know, a driver, not intentionally, but not making kids just walk something that they shouldn't be walking, but it's, it's where there's a need to get to a safer pickup zone. This is all this is about. The other thing, just so you're sure on what you're voting, on four-lane highways, we've had issues and many districts are going to this where they're trying to, again, create a safer pickup location because there's a lot of confusion from motorists about when to stop. If you're on a four-lane highway, is it a divided highway, is it not a divided highway? All that goes into the law. But we did specifically add to this, the Director of Transportation would have to approve any changes to a pickup point. And then the last thing was just bus turnarounds. We have issues all the time with parents, and I understand why, wanting us to go down private roads to pick up children. We've done that in the past, but inevitably, it's not an adequate turnaround. We end up getting a bus stuck, we tear up a private road, we've got to go in and fix it. So, this is just, gives some clarity to what roads we will go down and what roads we will not go down. So, that's, that's the essence of it.
Any questions, concerns? Need a motion to approve?
I'd so move that we approve the EDD, school bus scheduling and routing.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, thank you, sir. Amen. Item four, consideration and approval to partner with the Washita Parish Police Year for caution. Oops, let's skip one.
Skip one.
Choose an architect for Lindell Elementary Cafeteria project. Mr. Hicks?
Yes. I nominate TBA, Tom Brandon Association for the Architect.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to nominate Mr. Tim Brandon, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
With the exclusion of Ms. May. Any opposition? There's none, thank you. Now, item four, consideration and approval to partner with Washita Parish Police Year for caution light at West Washita High School, Mr. Beatty.
Board, I talked with Mr. Jimmy Tyson, police jury in our area the other day, and him and I, we wanted to marry up to get two caution lights. Well, whether on the ground, where the ag building goes across, where the kids cross right there. It's been just a, if, if you go out there, it just scares you a little bit because those kids are going from the main building to the ag building all through the day. And we just feel like partnering with them and getting some caution, slowing those cars down is going to help a lot, could save a life, could save some kid getting hurt. Just, it just makes our motorists more aware, that's a school zone, to slow down, to almost to a stop, and our kids have the right of way. So, we're going to partner with them. I just talked to him last night, they approved it, so I'm hoping we can approve it and we'll move on together, and I'll do more, find out the cost for that, for the board. So, I'd like to make that motion that we move forward with, working with the police jury to get that done.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any question?
Yeah, Mike, what's the speed limit on that road?
It's 15 right now, I'd like to get it further down.
Only a few times I've been there, the traffic goes pretty fast down that road.
It does, a little too fast. And what we're hoping also, I talked to Fort Gadsberry, and we're getting a study done there with 546, 151, and all that meets, we got a blinking light there, we need a red light. So, we're moving forward, we're getting a red light there also. So, that's a good thing, I appreciate it.
The speed limit is 15 and they're moving too fast?
Too fast.
They do 50 miles an hour.
15 is too fast.
They're not obeying the speed limit. We hope.
No.
What few cars I saw was exceeding 15.
You go out there, set that parking lot, they're doing 50.
Yeah, but we're hoping that that light slows some people down. And not, we got to start writing some tickets and get some people slowed down.
All right, we have a motion, motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Item five, consideration and approval of the 25-26 pupil progression plan, Mr. Pate.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and Ms. May. I don't want to waste your time, but if you have any questions about the pupil progression, this is the time of the year we come to you each year after we've met. We've met a couple of times with several people that's on the committee. I think you also have that in your folder with the list of those that are on the committee. So, this is not just a two or three-person committee that makes these decisions, and they're representation from all the schools, elementary, middle, and high, and different people in those schools. So, if you have any questions about what was sent out to you earlier, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. If not, then I would just ask that you approve these changes to the pupil progression that will go in effect for the 25-26 school year.
Any questions or concerns? Need a motion approved?
I'd so move that we approve the 25-26 pupil progression plan.
And a second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any, any opposition, no? There is none, motion to carry.
Thank you, Board.
Just, Board, for your clarification, with your approval, this now goes to LDOE for their approval as well, but they're very minor changes, so we don't expect any issues.
Item six, financial report for May 31st, Ms. Micas.
Good afternoon, Board. You have in your packet the financial report for the period ending May 31st, 2025. This is the 11th month of the fiscal year. As you know, we just passed our end of the year being June 30th. So, ending the, the period of May 31st, we're at 81.3% of our prior year fund balance in the general fund. That's a balance of 34.5 million. There's a balance of 32.5 million in the District 1 M&amp;O. That's at 108% of where we were this time last year. I will point out the 1968 sales tax. If you look to the current ending fund balance of 10.5 million, that was paid out in the month of June. So, next month, in June's financial statement, you'll see that balance go almost down to zero. The 1995 sales tax, of course, that is the 14th check that we pay out in November. So, you'll see it's at 8.2 million. And West Washita sales tax, we're ending the period with 21.4 million, and that's a cash balance. Majority of those funds are committed on the west side.
On the 1968 sales tax, have sent.
Yes.
Is that collected periodically and paid out?
It's collected monthly. So, there's a portion of that sales tax that is distributed monthly in employees' monthly paychecks. And then the 13th check at the end of the year is basically a clean-out check. So, whatever balance we have left at the end of the year, that's what we pay out in the 13th check. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Micas. Item seven, consider Edulorm Tax Millage for 2025, Regina Micas.
Board, we're going to revisit this that we had actually adopted last month. Just for clarification, what we didn't do is take a roll call vote. And at our, at our attorney's request, we're going to take a, revisit this resolution with a roll call vote. Resolution, be it resolved that the following millages are hereby levied on the 2025 tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the Washita Parish School Board. The millages, the taxing district Parish of Washita School Board Constitutional is 5.18 mils. Maintenance and operation is 24.15 mils. Taxing district East Washita Parish School Board, East Washita bond is 36 mils. Be it further resolved that the proper administrative officials of the Parish of Washita, State of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment roll of said parish for the year 2025, and to make the collection of taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all property subject to taxation as herein set forth. And collection thereof set shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. The foregoing resolution was read in full, and the roll was called on the adoption thereof, and the resolution was adopted by the following votes. So, if we could do a roll call vote.
Roll call, please.
I want to make sure before we vote, Regina, I want to reiterate that there is no increase in any of these millages over the previous year, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, the millage, as they are stated, are in, no change from the prior year. We rolled up in the prior year, so this is no change from prior year. The millages are exactly the same in all three categories.
I just wanted to reiterate that because on the east side bond that the voters voted on at the last election, we reassured them that there would be no increase in millage as a result of passing that bond and.
Correct.
Make sure that is the, the case at this point.
Correct. And, and I'm sure you're aware, but I work very closely with Mr. Schluter and with, with Argent, with Mr. Haynes, and we do projections to ensure that when we say there's going to be no increase in millage, that we have done everything possible to make those projections, and we were very conservative on our projections. So, I, I feel 100% confident in those projections.
We need to get a motion to approve this as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
And a second.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Ms. May?
I approve, or I, yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kobo?
Yes.
Thank you, Board.
Item eight, construction and renovation projects report, Mr. Hemp Hill.
Got one sheet this time. Getting a lot of stuff done, it's that time.
Running out of money.
Running out of money. Summertime, and it's hot, and we getting things done. We're fixing to get busy on, on the east side with Mr. Schluter graciously presenting us with this extra east side bond money to get things rolling, so we're doing that. So, if you have any specific question on any of your projects, I'd be happy to answer anything you got.
Explain to me how we going to work this baseball and softball complex? I mean, we already got somebody in mind, somebody going to come out? Do you have any idea when it going to get started on it?
That's up for y'all to vote on to, for, put it out there.
It's on there.
No, just a few minutes.
It's on your agenda.
What's the timeline on completion on that, tentatively? I mean, is it going to be?
We're going to get it started probably December, probably be finished by, especially before ball season starts back up.
Hopefully by the end of the year, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the goal.
The Richwood Junior High School Pavilion.
Mm-hmm.
When are they going to start?
The Richwood Middle School?
Yes, Middle.
Uh, they got the pad poured, and they got, where I see that foundation done? They got the building ordered, it should be completed before August, is what Gentry's telling us.
They have the foundation done?
I don't think they, they don't have the concrete poured yet, do they, Clint? They got the dirt work done.
That's about two and a half weeks, three weeks. I was just concerned about that.
Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, it'll all come in and go together rather quickly.
Did the cleanup crew arrive to clean up around this equipment that's been put in this summer at the elementary schools?
I think Mr. Peters had gotten with the playground equipment people about cleaning up some areas far.
Any other questions?
Well, starting at high school, you and I talked previously before the meeting, and attempted to have all, everything completed on the previous bond is this summer, is that correct? Before school starts? And I know I talked to Tim, and then the next bond that we'll be working on will be starting pretty, pretty soon thereafter. So, it's kind of going to be a mesh in between those two bonds, but a lot of construction going on over there, so appreciate that. They've already started designing on, starting up, they working with Dave Bo, and also with Reverend McCoy scheduling some stuff, get the new bond going. Yeah, yeah. Appreciate TBA and what all they do on those projects.
They get paid.
Everybody gets paid.
Everybody gets paid.
Some people do a good job, some don't. Yeah. I found that out. Yeah.
Stephen, before you go, just wanted to say thank you. Well, a lot of our projects are getting completed, and you've been on top of things, and TBA's been on top of things, and it's looking good all over my district. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Stephen.
One last thing, I, I mentioned to you, Mr. Geis, the Richwood Stadium, I know it's not on here. Hopefully, we can get it.
The pressure washers? Yeah, that's going, that'll be done. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Evaluation bids, Mr. Peters.
Good afternoon, Board. Have a few items here. Under evaluation of bids, bid number 34-25, that's the property sale over on Gordon Avenue. We set the budget on that, on that property sale at 85% of the appraised value. I did want to mention, we have a typo on, on this where it says funding source. There is really no funding source, it shouldn't say West Washita sales tax, so.
I figured that was in Monroe.
I know, that might have been a source of confusion, but, but we did, when conducting the bid this past month, we did not receive any bids on the property. And in just a minute, I'll, I'll request that the Board provide us permission to, to bid this piece of property out one more time. So, so under evaluation of bids for bid number 34-25, we did not receive any bids.
That Gordon Avenue, it's located south of Monroe?
Yeah.
Right by the Corps of Engineers.
Is that Reverend McCoy's district, yeah?
It's in the city limits of Monroe.
It's empty piece of property?
Right, yes. Yeah, it's, it's basically two lots.
It's my understanding former transportation shop years and years and years ago.
They moved twice since then.
All right, and.
All right, so, we'll let the rebid?
Right, and I'll, I'll ask for y'all's permission to conduct that bid along with these other items. Would you like for me to do that all together, or would you like to do those permission to bid separately?
Good, we'll all together.
All right. So, permission to bid 1-25, that's our copy paper bid, we do that quarterly. Various budget amounts, various funding sources on that. Then we have bid number 2-25, that is Washita and Sterlington High School baseball and softball field replacement, and we're going to be utilizing the east side bond monies for that with a budget of $4,050,000.
What did you say, replacement?
It's 26, Jerry?
I'm sorry?
Two days, 26 on our form, is it 25 or 26?
26, sorry, I misspoke. What's, say that again?
We're facing a dirt field with artificial field.
Right, it's going to be an artificial turf field on both the baseball and softball fields at Sterlington and Washita High School. Yeah, they're with a new base, new pad, new turf on, on both schools there. Right, yeah, and, and by bidding them together, we feel like we're going to, we're going to get a much better price on that, so. Then we have bid number 3-26, property sale for 3420 Gordon Avenue. I'm requesting the Board to approve a property sale amount of 80% of the appraised value of the property, that's $14,160. And again, there is no funding source for that property sale, so I apologize for that. Bid number 4-26, West Monroe High School Training Room Furnishings. The funding source being West Washita sales tax, and we set a budget of $155,000. And then lastly, we have bid 5-26, Lindell Elementary Cafeteria renovations and improvements. The funding source being West Washita sales tax and a budget of $2,300,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions if y'all might have.
Any questions, comments? Need a motion to grant permission to bid on these five items.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you, Chair. Board, I put a copy of the meetings for this next fiscal year in your folder so that you can have for yourself, it's also taped inside your folder, so just for your information. Had to make a few little changes, but we have to work with the superintendent who travels a lot. Required by state, of course.
It's the Baton Rouge.
And another thing, I don't know if you've read or seen, the hands-free law for driving with a hand, cellphone in your hand goes into effect August 1st. So, if you don't want to take it, don't pick up your phone. If you want to read more about that, you can Google it, and that's all I have. Our next meeting is August 12th at noon. Mr. Geis?
Yes, sir, just want to, Mr. Kobo, thank you. You mentioned briefly, some of you may have caught, July 3rd, the state decided that was a good day, day before holiday and holiday week, to release preliminary test scores. So, I say that tongue-in-cheek, we were happy to get them as early as we did. Usually, we're right up to school before we get them. We use that data in evaluating and planning for the year to come, so we were happy to get it. I am encouraged and excited, but understand that we call the data dirty data that was coming out, that came out because we are still missing several key pieces to that. come out, that came out because we are still missing several key pieces to that. So, studies, results have not been released. That will be sometime in August. Interest in Opportunities, the K-8 Progress Index, the ELPT Progress, and DCIA. I know that means a lot to a lot of you unless you're working the circles that we work in every day. But, so I say all that to say, a lot of information's still not there. But we are very encouraged, very happy with the reports that came, that came out. Want to thank Mary Beth Holzer and Haley Holly sitting back over there. Mary Beth, I know, was visiting her mom last week, but spent a lot of time working on these scores because of the date, and I appreciate everything that she's done. So, we will take this data and in the next 10 days, start meeting with every one of our schools. We've already done that a lot with the high schools, but our K-8 campuses, breaking down the data and, and planning for next year. But overall, we saw significant growth in elementary ELA. Our middle school, schools had growth in ELA math and science. We had 17 perfect ELA scores, K-8, 15 perfect scores in math, one in science at the K-8 level, two in, in middle school math. And just kind of piggyback, we had three perfect LEAP scores at the high school level. Our English learner group saw gains this year. We actually had 36 kids test out of our EL program, which is a, a really encouraging to me because so much of the new accountability system that we start this year, some of our schools will have a large percentage of their scores based on our EL population, and we saw growth there. We saw significant growth in our special ed population. Just to give you an idea, six and a half points in ELA, two and a half points in math, and 1.8 in science. That is a very small subgroup comparatively speaking, but again, weights a lot in our performance scores as we move forward. We saw growth in every area there. We're certainly, certainly proud of that. So, lot more to come. Won't get into specifics on schools because we still have a lot more information that needs to be released before we can really share that. But just want to kind of give you, we're really encouraged. Mary Beth has told me, she says, as a district, she feels like we're going to be growing again, so that's always good to know. So, it's on her for not. So, I say that jokingly. She wanted me to emphasize, it's dirty data, so y'all understand that. But, lot of hard work goes into that. A lot of those people, and I know I'm going to leave somebody out as I scan the room. I see Angela and some of her crew over here, but they're sitting on that side of the room, just appreciate what they do in leading on the instructional side. And we've got big plans for this year. We expect to grow that even more. So, proud of them. Just a couple of things y'all know, realize that within three weeks, we'll be start welcoming our employees back on campus. Next week, Ms. Calhoun sitting in the back is leading our orientations for our new principals and new assistant principals. Our teacher induction program fires up July 21st, and that'll run over the course of two weeks for our new employees.